Call to order, the Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, regular Sonora City Council meeting at 4:02. Roll call, please.
Mayor Matt Hawkins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Sutch?
Here.
Councilmember Garaventa is absent.
Here.
I hear it here.
He's in the hallway.
He made it.
The pregnant pause. Okay, so I'll call for any public comment on any closed session items? Man, there's just nobody. Is there anybody on, um? Yeah, I see Dana. Okay. Don't see any hands raised there. Okay, so I will bring it back. And at 4:04, we will adjourn into closed session. Cool. Suzanne is here. Are we going to include her? I didn't think of it then. Okay, everybody's ready. Good. Okay. I would like to call this regular Sonora City Council meeting to order for July 5th, 2022, at 5:01 PM. Actually, we're reconvening back in open session. So with both of these, it was just, uh, sta- uh, direction was given to staff, correct? Okay. Okay, uh, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Sutch, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance for us, please?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tripped over my own two feet up here. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Here.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Sutch?
Here.
The record show that we are all here. City Clerks' Report on Agenda Posting.
At 1:38 PM on the first day of July 2022, the agenda for the City of Sonora Council meeting scheduled for today was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda. Any issues? Okay. Uh, just let everyone know, my, uh, I hurt my shoulder somehow today, so if I'm not turning my head or tripping over myself somehow, it's, um, that's why, so. Okay, um, presentations right now, um, I don't think District One Supervisor Dave Goldenberg is here, correct?
I, I.
Uh, they did have a Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Their meeting. It was gonna be very long, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I believe so.
So he did request, though, um, consideration of his presentation later on in the agenda, if he's able to make it.
Okay, that works for me. Um, okay, so, onto item number four. Uh, historian recognitions for Patricia Perry and Sharon Maravich, introduced by Mayor Hawkins and presentations by Councilmember Colette Sutch and Councilmember Anne Sagerstrom. So I just wanted to start off this part. We have two ladies in the audience that have had a huge effect, and made a lot of great things happen in this city that I personally did not believe had been recognized enough or at all. And I can't thank them enough for their leadership, especially when it came to historic preservation in this city. I wanted to do this early on after I became mayor, and then COVID struck, and it was awful, so. What better time than now, when we're gonna have a lot of people here, so these two individuals can be recognized? So what I did was, I'm not a very good writer. I typically write things that are very pointed. Basically, like Councilmember Sutch said, just the facts. So I'm not a very good writer when it comes to writing things. No, no. But it, it, it's just, you know, how I am. Now, I, I can talk at a million miles an hour, but, um, uh, what I did was I asked, um, Councilmember Sagerstrom, Councilmember Sutch, to write something for these two ladies, and, you know, let's bring it back to the council. So what I would like to do is recognize them. I guess we'll bring each one up at a time, and then the council member that, how, how do you, how do, how do you ladies wanna do this?
I don't know if Pat wants to stand while I read three pages, so.
Oh, that would be fun.
I don't, I don't know how you'd like to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's also why we brought the chairs up.
Do they recline, Victorian recliners? So let's, um, I, I guess we'll start. Yes, we have Pat standing. I honestly, this is something I haven't had the chance to do a whole lot, or actually at all in the last two years, so this is all new to me. So, um, yes, so let's, let's come up to the podium, Pat, if you would come up to the podium. I guess we'll go with Pat first, and then Sharon second, if that's okay.
All right, um, all right, do I just?
And Pat, if you wanna sit down, have a seat, it's okay, too.
Yeah, they're, they're historic, we're not sitting down. No, no, we're not doing that.
We have to put the caution tape on them.
Why don't you pull up a chair?
Yeah.
You want me to go to the podium?
Yes, please.
All right.
Yes.
All right, okay.
Am I supposed to talk to the public from the podium?
Uh, that's fine, if you would, basically, it's.
It's like talking to you.
They would, they would see your pretty face on the screen.
Yeah, thank you. Talk out of the side of my mouth. Okay, well, um, I first met Pat Perry when she was interviewing my mother about her memories of Sonora. Uh, my mother moved here with my father in 1946. Pat was diligently recording her responses, probably to include in a Tuolumne County Historical Society CHISP feature. At the time, I was distracted by my career and only paid half an ear to the proceedings, although, as a Sagerstrom, I was surrounded by Sonora history in which my family has been intimately associated since 1899. Since my mother's passing in 2012, I've been much more involved with family history and artifacts and ephemera, and by extension, my relationship with Pat Perry has grown and blossomed into a genuine friendship, I hope, enriched with a mutual love for local history and lore. In the passing years, my appreciation for Pat's encyclopedic knowledge of our town and its denizens' history has never failed to amaze me. Whatever the topic, person, or artifact, Pat would have a story or tip or provenance. In her capacity as city historian, she's also provided a safe harbor and display space for local treasures and art in the City Hall's impressive and formal museum. Pat's Road to Sonora was somewhat circuitous. Found out today, born in Burbank, she grew up in Sunnyvale, where her father worked at Lockheed. After earning an associate's degree in finance at a local two-year college, she snagged her first job with CBS in Los Angeles. CBS saw her potential and moved her to New York, not her preferred milieu. She committed to one year and returned to the West Coast, where she was hired by Frank Perry as an accounting manager at Litten Industries in Sunnyvale. Very quickly, they recognized one another as soulmates and began a future together. Pat and Frank put their power into being a duo and looked for new jobs. At the same time, Pat returned to San Jose State to earn a BA in ancient history. And the young marrieds began touring the state. On a two-pass trip, Tioga, Sonora, they made a stop in Twainheart and fell in love again, this time with the town. To ensure more time in the mountains, they bought a cabin and settled into vacation weekends. After commuting on weekends for 10 years, they realized their future was in the Sierras and began a transition plan. Pat was the first to be hired as Sonora's Finance Officer, also a first for Sonora, where she earned a reputation for being fair and exacting. Frank followed two years later, securing a job at TRWD Number Two, now TUD. At the same time, they broke ground and began building their lovely home in confidence. As Pat dug into the community, she continued to collecting groundbreaking roles, among them, first woman Rotarian in Sonora as a member of the New Sunrise Rotary, GOAT. During her 20 years as Sonora's Finance Director from 1994 to 2004, Pat's interest in local history was piqued by her bi-weekly perusal of Sonora's mayors hanging in the council chamber. There were pictures, but no associated histories or stories attached to them. Pat began to dig into the past, first in the Union Democrat Archives, and then, as the internet expanded, so did her research. Local resources like the Tuolumne County Historical Society, the Genealogical Society, and the Carlo De Ferreri Archives also supplied rich sources of information. She also served as president of the Historical Society, the Tuolumne County Historical Society, and the Genealogical Society, and undoubtedly, more posi- more positions that interviews didn't cover. When she realized no one was collecting verbal history from the town's older citizens, she began recording interviews with longtime residents who can tell, who counted our town's important events and significant changes. I would be remiss if I didn't mention her publishing output, which is as, which is impressive and includes many features in the Historical Society's CHISP, notably, a wonderful recounting of Christmas in Gold Rush, Sonora, and an article, uh, and an article that was paired with a museum exhibit on the impact of World War Two, World War One on Sonora's residents. In addition to articles in local history in the Union Democrat and Arthurship of Sonora Remembered, published in 2003. Among Pat's other projects, she single-handedly created the aforementioned City History Museum inside City Hall, one of Sonora's best-kept secrets. The exhibits include a comprehensive historical photography collection, portraits of Sonora notables, paintings and prints from every local artist of historical note, Milwaukee Indian artifacts, and collectibles from many Sonora households. As the City Hall is open to the public, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, I encourage residents to tour the interior for a Cliff Notes version of Sonora's past. Of course, friends and colleagues can attest to, uh, of Pat's, can attest to a practicality and directness that sometimes disguises her caring and sensitive nature and deep-seated love for our town and country. She was very involved in the celebrating of the city's 150th anniversary, Seska Centennial, and instrumental in taking city history to the schools. She initiated historical walking tours for fourth graders, which were sadly suspended during the COVID outbreak. And finally, holidays would not be holidays without a delivery of Pat's delectable peanut butter rocky road. Unfortunately, I never have enough leftovers to share. Knowing Pat has been both an education and a delight, I'm so honored to be able to share an iota of her contributions to the, uh, to the highlighting and recording of the history of Sonora, queen of the Southern minds, and to her ongoing role as city historian. All Sonora residents, current and future, owe her a debt of gratitude for keeping our storied past alive.
First, I thank you very much, but I would like to say, as Anne mentioned, I didn't do this alone. Over the years, I've been fortunate to meet a lot of wonderful people with Sonora history. And the thing I've always been impressed with, with Sonora, is how our pioneer families loved the city. And I don't know if you're gonna say anything about these chairs today?
I do have a little thing about the chairs.
This'll be another example of some of Sonora's history coming home. And I just think that's, it, it makes it wonderful for those of us that deal with the history, that, that's the reward, is that people love the history of Sonora. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me stand on this side of you, not this side of you. Because. So I'm, what, Sutch? And to write and to honor Sharon Maravich is both a joyful and a daunting task. Joyful because the body of her work is impressive, and daunting because to truly capture all Sharon has accomplished is to write a novel. There are so many reasons to thank Sharon for her work in our community. Sharon continues to be steadfast, precise, ethical, eloquent, and tireless. We have so much for which to be grateful. Sharon arrived in Sonora in 1969 as a young Mills College graduate with a degree in economics. So take caution when you tell Sharon that water to the trees in front of City Hall will cost $63,000. This economist will argue it's a matter of principle and priority. Sorry, Melissa. The Union Democrat brought Sharon to our town, where she worked as a young reporter for three years under the wise counsel of Sally Scott. She's self-deprecating when speaking about her skills as a reporter, yet she writes with a gifted pen. I expect the young reporter city council beat must have been riveting in those days. Sharon had hoped to gain enough experience to eventually write for the Oakland Tribune, but life often takes unexpected turns. It was 1969 that Sharon Thompson met the young, dashing consummate gentleman, most eligible bachelor of Tuolumne County, Assistant District Attorney Thomas Maravich. Legend has it that they first met in person when Sharon, who also covered the crime beat, joined Tom on a trip to Pine Crest Lake to see if the complaints that the lake was being overrun by hippies had any bearing. Sharon says it didn't. Tom and Sharon married in 1972, sharing a love for all things historic. If you frequent, frequent, frequent to town in those early days, you would remember seeing Sharon and Tom happily strolling hand in hand on many summer evenings. Sharon sat on the Sonora Planning Commission in 1978 and won a seat on the council in 1982, a seat she held for four years. Sharon was the second woman to serve on the council and the first woman to hold the Vice Mayor title in its 141 years. It was during her tenure on the council that I became aware of what would be Sharon's lifelong advocacy. Sharon became a champion of mine, of many, including me, when she fought for the plan to build a 7-Eleven convenience store in the, quote, "Motherlode motif," end quote, on prime real estate where the Fire Museum now sits, across from our iconic Red Church and the gateway to our town. To the dismay of many, the 7-Eleven was eventually built in spite of Sharon's fierce four-year opposition. I think it most likely cost her another term on city council and the hope of many that she would be Sonora's first female mayor. I want to tell you a story about the old Sonora Community Hospital, though not really something I consider historic. It's another example of Sharon's understanding of the importance of our buildings, and not just the brick and mortar, but the collective memory in those walls she fights to protect. So many were born and so many died there, and so many lives were saved inside those sacred walls. Sharon understands these are not insignificant things. She speaks of Americans becoming estranged from their community because old buildings are torn down and replaced. And I quote, "You look for familiar things, and they're not there," end quote, she says. And if buildings must go, Sharon demands their history and the people who played a part is all documented. I'm going to list a few of the committees and commissions on what Sharon served, and by a few, it's more than a dozen, and that's just a few of what she served. Tuolumne County Historical Society, Tuolumne County Democratic Central Committee, Democratic State Central Committee, Tuolumne County Museum Board of Governors, co-founder of Sonora Beautiful Committee, California Planning and Conservation League, Tuolumne County Humane Society, Tuolumne County Art Association, Audubon Society, California Preservation Foundation, National Trust for Historic Preservation, Native Daughters of the Golden West, Sierra Club, Rails to Trails Conservancy, Vision Sonora, and Tuolumne County Historic Preservation Review Committee. Writings and publications on what Sharon has worked. She helped write the historic element for the City of Sonora General Plan. She wrote historic preservation, this historic preservation part of the City of Sonora's successful Main Street application. She was the author of numerous paper and paper articles in Tuolumne County Historical Society Quarterly Articles on Local History, prepared on behalf of Tuolumne County Historical Society, three successful National Register Historical Places nominations, worked on the committee that prepared, quote, "Sonora, A Guide to Yesterday," brochure, coordinated gift, a gift of preservation books to Tuolumne County Library, and currently, Sharon completed editing along with Cheryl Maddox and Dee Bowman, Carl D. Ferreira's Histor- History of California about Sonora from the mid-19th century to the establishment of the town of Sonora. They hope it will be printed sometime in September and available to all of us at Christmas time. And I wanted to also tell a story of an error I made when not listening to Sharon. Sorry about this. This is my public apology to you. And it's a cautionary tale to the newly-formed council as well. When the plans for the new bank of Stockton on South Washington Street came before us, Sharon, who opposed the project, asked that we at least require the board and baton siding designed to be replaced with horizontal siding to maintain the historical integrity and more correctly match the surrounding neighborhoods. I thought board and bat was historically appropriate, and I approved the plans, ignoring Sharon's request. I slept restlessly that night, realizing that I hadn't noticed the siding on the homes in the vicinity. I rose early the following morning and couldn't find a home that did not have horizontal siding. It's an example of a subtle detail that could have made a significant, yet subtle difference, when it, which is often the case with good architectural design. We erred by not listening to Sharon's request. And I later was thankful that Mayor Hawkins listened when Sharon insisted that the marquee on City Hall be removed. We were all in agreement. In preparation for the, for this night, I called Sharon Sister Joyce, hoping she could recall an incident that sparked Sharon's interest in historical appreciation and preservation. She couldn't really recall anything from childhood, except perhaps her beautiful alma mater, Mills College, founded and built in 1871. And I think perhaps it was that Sharon, that Sharon was simply taken by Sonora's beauty and charm and knew it deserved her protection. It's without a doubt that Sharon has been a leader in protecting the historic integrity of our town and protecting the town itself. Sonora's true wealth is its natural beauty and its historic significance. There is no question Sharon can't answer about the history of buildings standing and buildings lost. I somehow hope her encyclopedic memory has been bottled as a potion, so her work will be carried forward. And with so much gratitude, I thank you, Sharon Maravich.
I'd like to first thank the council for honoring Pat Perry. She has done, you, you just can't imagine the, the archive that she's put together. And I hope all of you, including the new, uh, council members, will have a ti- a chance to tour and see what she's done. Plus, there's an awful lot of stuff in the computer as well. But I consult her when I do some of my articles for the paper because, you know, she's gone down that path. And, uh, it, it's been very helpful. I'd like to thank you for the honor. I'm, I'm very grateful. Yeah, it's, it's been interesting over the years, but I think what I've noticed among elected and appointed officials is that there is more sensitivity and interest in historic buildings and the cultural heritage, not only of Sonora, but Tuolumne County. And, um, all you have to do is look at your general plan and turn to the cultural resources element, and you will see what the goals and objectives are. It's a very good element, and it's an optional element, which speaks well of the council. Didn't have to have it legally, but wanted to have it. So it, it, it's, it's really enjoyable for me to see the things that have been accomplished. And, um, as I generally say, the, the price of historic preservation is eternal vigilance. And, um, I'm still out there, and I'll do what I can. And, um, again, uh, thank you very much.
I, I remember what, uh. Oh. Oh, go ahead, and then I can, then I can finish.
And I guess I'm supposed to speak to the public this way, sorry. I had the back of my head the last time. So, uh, of the, one of the founding families of Sonora, the Burdens, Charles Howard and Charles Henry, both Sonora mayors for eight years, and one even, uh, two years longer, fathered many children, who parented many children. That's how a Sagerstrom, a Jones, and a Bronkeny happened to be cousins, and how a Sagerstrom was delighted to have access to two Victorian chairs from the Burden Undertaking Coroner Establishment, now El Hardin. Carol Bronkeny was looking for a home for the chairs, so she asked Steve Jones if he had any ideas. Steve called his distant cousin and friend, Anne, and the chairs were delivered today, just in time to be dedicated to two of the city's most dedicated preservers of history. Colette and I wanted history to be integral to our tribute to these wonderful women, and we thought the chairs belonging to a local historic, local historical celebrities fit the bill. Also, they're kind of a nice addition to the room. We will have them, um, with little plaques and all that kind of thing, and they will be at home here in the city council chambers in, in your honor.
Councilmember Sutch and Councilmember Sagerstrom, I want to say thank you very much. That was honestly beautiful, and I really appreciate that very much. I just was gonna throw out there really quick. When Sharon and I first met, I was pretty riled up about the old Caltrans building on, um, Mono and Greenlee getting torn down. And I was still three years, three and a half years here, and I'm like, why are they tearing this down? And, you know, that's how we formed our friendship, and your friendship's meant a lot to me over the years. So I just want to say thank you. Pat, you know, when I first came on this council years ago, you know, you defended me several times, and I really needed it, and I've never been able to thank you enough. So, again, your friendship has meant the world to me also. Thank you. Okay, that was awesome. So, next, um, this is something that makes me very sad, very happy at the same time, but very sad at the same time. So I'm gonna be, uh, considering adoption of Resolution, 752022D and 752022E, recognizing Councilmember Colette Sutch and Councilmember Jim Garavenna, former mayor, former mayor pro tem, for their contributions and service to the city of Sonora. So I will read both of those, and I will do my best not to tear up because these are two people that I have a tremendous amount of respect for and have gotten along and sparred with and gotten angry with, and I think even yelled at both of y'all at one time or two. But, again, yeah, she yells back. Jim just rolls his eyes at me.
Yeah, but Jim's got a hell of an eye roll.
Yeah, yeah, he really does, but, so all of.
Being quiet makes it stick.
Sometimes, especially when you show up at my house and we're, you know, getting into it a little bit, and then you just get quiet, and it's like, okay. So, um, so, um, okay, so here is 752022D. Whereas in 2017, Mayor Connie Williams created a homeless task force to study, understand, and figure the best path forward for the homeless in Sonora, in Tuolumne County, and requested members of the public to apply. And whereas, without any real experience in the realm of government, Councilmember Sutch, completing an application, was chosen by Mayor Williams. And whereas, on this task force, she met Jim Garavenna, who seemed to share similar beliefs about humanitarian treatment of the poor, peppered with a sense of practical improvements in their lives. And, this is a little long, someone give us a sip of water. Whereas, when an opening of the Sonora City Council came, Colette reviewed her resume, took inventory of her life's work, and what brought her joy to her and saw that she had been working towards this her entire life. And whereas, Councilmember Sutch has been a leader on multiple local and regional committees, commissions, including the TCTC slash TCTA, Vision Sonora, Tuolumne County Commission on Homelessness, Tuolumne County, uh, House Committee Ad Hoc, Tuolumne County Outdoor Shelter Committee Ad Hoc, Amador Tuolumne County Action Agency Board of Directors, Central Sierra Consortium of Care, Amador Tuolumne County Action Agency, ACHA Review, Rank and Fund Committee, Amador Tuolumne County Community Action Agency, Personnel Committee, TC Stanislaw Integrated Regional Water Management Authority, or, or one, uh, I, yeah. TC Fire Save Council, Social Equity Committee, Access Tuolumne, Tuolumne County Child Care Council, Resiliency Village Board of Directors. And whereas accomplishments that she is most proud of are her work with homeless, homelessness, finding funding from the city, ACHA, the Sonora Area Foundation, love Tuolumne County and a few private donors to bring toilets to Camp Hope to solve a public health problem, but also bring some dignity to the lives of the unsheltered living there. And Councilmember Sutch is recognized for her role on the Resiliency Village Board of Directors. And whereas Councilmember Sutch is most proud of is her work for social justice as the Chair of the City of Sonora Social Equity Committee. Now for, uh, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Sonora does hereby resolve as follows. The City of Sonora expresses its gratitude to Councilmember Colette Sutch for her leadership and dedication to providing a better community for the residents of the City of Sonora and Tuolumne County, and wishes her. Tuolumne County, and wishes her well in the next chapter of her life for years to come. I gotta... So with these, these are considered separately? They take a vote, so...
They do take a vote. So would you like to take it individually, or you could read them all at...
How's the council feel?
I'd go with individually.
That's because it seems more powerful.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so I will ask for any council member discussion on this before I ask for public comment.
Well, I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure serving with Colette, and, you know, I'm not that long back into Sonora, but I've become, I hope, a friend and of course, an ongoing admirer. And I know that she'll be as engaged in the city as an independent individual as she was as a council admirer.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's been a long time since the task force, huh? Yeah. Yeah, we, Connie had put Colette on the task force, and I think at that time, that's kind of when you got the first inkling to want to be on the council, or before then?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I was getting, and I said, I think, I think, you know, you ought to think about joining the council. And here you are, and it's been an amazing four years, and I hope you still stay involved with government in some respect, you know? Don't let these guys get away with anything.
I'll come to meetings.
Okay.
Just test me.
Okay, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, soon as we go, we're... Did Mark, did you want to say?
I will say a word. So we have sparred a great deal. But I sincerely believe that you have always done what you believe is best going forward for the city, and I respect and admire that. And we'll probably continue to spar, but from a distance.
Okay, so I'll wait on my comments here just a second. I want to go to public comment. I guess we'll start with the Zoom calls first, if that's okay. Let's see, Shelley Muniz? Oh, hold on, you're still muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for calling me, or calling on me. I just wanted to thank Colette for everything that she has done for our city and our county. She continually steps up, and I'm proud to call her my friend and fellow board member at Resiliency Village, and I look forward to working with her for many years to come. Thank you, Colette.
Thank you. And then on to Pat.
Okay, I also am proud to call Colette my friend. I would just mention one thing that wasn't mentioned in the resolution is her, she was the president of the Columbia College Foundation, and she's still a member of that organization and worked very hard there before she stepped down as president. And I want to thank Colette for her, for creating and keeping on track the Social Equity Committee for a year and a half, under much opposition from the community as well as other council members. It was a really yeoman job and something that, having I attended many of those meetings and often public comment was, you know, very much opposed to having such a resolution, they came out with a great resolution, thanks to Colette and thanks to the members, but really Colette was, provided such great leadership there, and I really want to state my appreciation for that. As a member of the Martin Luther King Junior Committee, the Motherland Martin Luther King Junior Committee, for 19 years, I can say that this is a great social justice document, and Martin Luther King would be proud of you, Colette. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom before I go to the audience in here? Okay, I will ask anyone that wants to make a comment.
This is actually, can't take credit, I'm just the messenger. This is from Nikki Coleman and James. With all their love, Nikki could not get away from work today. She is devastated that she's not here. Just warning you, I poured out some of the water, but just keep it dripping here.
I'm kind of awed, stuff like this.
I know.
I don't.
Well, I'm not saying I know.
We won't work down here back here.
Oh, well.
I'm sorry.
My head was in the way of the photos.
Oh, sorry.
And if I could just say, I'm here to thank Colette Such for bringing her experience and expertise to our community for these last four years, serving on Sonora City Council. During that time, she also worked to provide college scholarships for our local students through her work with the Columbia College Foundation, supporting our future leaders. Colette's contribution to Sonora was evident in her careful consideration of the details of the city's operations and projects, but more than that, she also asked each of us to envision Sonora's role, connecting us to people from every part of the world, who come to us, sorry, who come to us through tourism, but also are the diverse residents of our community, often ignored in how we view Sonora's special identity. Colette encouraged our community to have a conversation about how all residents of our city should be treated, and what makes justice and tolerance of differences a measure of how everyone who lives or visits here experiences our town. Some leading community members were so unnerved by a conversation about justice that one of our largest institutions retaliated against a member of the Social Equity Committee for joining that conversation, proving the need for examining the values that were the essence of the committee's work. I speak for many of us in our community who have been inspired by Colette's courage and leadership, and promise we will continue to work for it to make Sonora's future embrace everyone's well-being and involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up before I bring this back to the council? Okay, so bringing it back to the council, Colette, I just want to say thank you for your friendship the last four years, four and a half years. It really has meant a lot to me. You know, like I said, I think I sent you a news article one day about two of our Supreme Court members that are on complete opposites, and I'm like, this is kind of like us, we debate, and, you know, we've had some interesting phone calls, but we've had a lot of good phone calls. A lot of the public doesn't get to see what happens behind the scenes, and I mean, I can personally attest that even though that, you know, all of us here are on different ends of the spectrum politically, that I know, I know that Colette has wanted what's best for the city. You know, regardless of what anyone has thought, or any accusations in the past, or finger pointing, or anything else, Colette has wanted nothing but the best for the city. So I just want to thank you for the last four years. It's been really incredible, and it's gone by so fast.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to make her cry. So I guess I'll ask for a motion on this.
Well, I move to adopt resolution number 07-05-2022-D.
All third.
Okay, so I got a motion by Councilmember Garavenna, second by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, and a third by Councilmember Segestrom. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. Thank you. And then on...
Thank you all.
I just, like I said, this is a very sad time for me too, but it's a very happy time, so we'll get to the happy time in a little bit. Okay, so Resolution 752022D, a resolution of the City Council of Sonora, recognizing Councilmember James Garavenna. James? I think if I called you James, you'd hit me. Is that Sir James? Okay.
Jamie?
Whereas James Garavenna was born and raised in Sonora and is a fourth-generation county native, who graduated from Sonora High School in UC Davis. And whereas in 2014, Councilmember Garavenna was elected to the City Council, and whereas Councilmember Garavenna served on the Tuolumne County Planning Commission for six years, the Board of Supervisors Planning Committee, and the Tuolumne General Board of Trustees. And whereas Councilmember Garavenna was also a citizens representative on the Parking and Traffic Commission, 2005 to 2014, the TC Transportation Council Citizens Advisory Committee, 2002 to 2014, the recent Vision Sonora Advisory Board, and co-chair of the successful Measure I Campaign, 2004, strengthening public safety in the city. And whereas Councilmember Garavenna has also served as the president of the Eureka Engine Company Number One, one of Sonora's historic fire companies, and has served under Tuolumne County Historical Society, president in 2005, and Tuolumne County Museum Boards. And whereas Councilmember Garavenna has been a leader on multiple local and regional committees and commissions, including the Central Sierra Economic Development, Fire Save Council, Local Agency Forenameation Commission, LAFCO, Solid Waste Committee, Tuolumne County Chamber, Transportation Committee, Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority, TCEDA. Well, that was rough.
That was fun.
Yeah. Tuolumne County Transportation Council, TCTC, Visitors Bureau, Parking and Traffic Commission, Public Safety Committee, and whereas Councilmember Garavenna believes in open government, people working together to find quality solutions, and has a passion and desire to make government work efficiently and effectively. Now, therefore, I gotta get some more water. I apologize. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Sonora does hereby resolve as follows. The City of Sonora expresses its gratitude for Councilmember James Garavenna for his leadership and dedication to providing a better community for the residents of the City of Sonora and Tuolumne County, and wishes him well in the next chapter of his life for the years to come. So in, I'll let, I'll let the rest of council members, and then I'll say something afterwards. So would anyone like to speak?
Good. I guess I'll start then, but, so, as is often the case, we bring a lot of our own personal values and starting points, so sometimes we come to different conclusions in what's best or not best. But I have appreciated the way you, Jim, have always been willing to listen to argument and change your mind if you felt it carried water. And my respect for you has been, has grown through the years. I didn't start from a low position, but it has continued to increase ever since, and I, it's a sad day that you're leaving. So you have given the city a great deal of your time and enthusiasm and wisdom, and we will miss it, and we will miss you. And I wish you well going forward, and look forward to seeing you back here again sometime before we're all too old to appreciate it.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I was just going to say, I don't know Jim that well, although we're neighbors. He waves at me occasionally when he drives past, but I have appreciated in my two years at the council, his deep dive into, you know, city affairs and knowledge of precedent and ordinances and occurrences and, you know, I can't remember anything from last week. He's always like, you know, two years ago this happened, 15 years ago, didn't we do this? So that has always been, you know, remarkable to me and also so helpful, so I appreciate it. And I wish you great luck on the other side of the country.
Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank you for changing my life and asking me to run for city council.
I hope it was for the better.
And I mean that with great gratitude, but also just your wise perspective on a lot of the issues. And as Anne said, your sort of historical perspective that brings clarity, has brought clarity for me. So, and I've liked serving on the council with you very much. So, and I'm very actually excited about this next chapter in your life. I can't imagine it's not a little bit unnerving, but, you know...
It's going to be an adventure.
I'd like, I'd love to rendezvous with you and Dawn in New York City sometime. That would be great. Thank you.
I'll just keep my comments after the public. Okay, so I will ask for the Zoom comments first. It looks like BZ Smith has her hand up.
I do have my hand up. I met Jim when I was pretty darn young, and one of the things I loved about having a chance to meet him is he had graduated from college and then ended up coming back to Tuolumne County to make a life here, and I was so impressed that a young man would be here and dedicate his life to this community. And one of the things I loved about getting to know Jim over the years is his absolute loyal appreciation of the history of our fire service here in Tuolumne County, and I know he has a family connection with that, and I have always admired the dedication that he gave to the Fire Museum, which I hope we'll be able to find a way along the path of life to keep that heritage alive in Jim's honor, if nothing else. And the other thing I just want to comment on, I want to thank Jim for the day that I walked into a little coffee shop that we knew was 81 and saw him sitting with my dear friend Colette Such, and I found out that they were having a conversation about whether or not Colette should run for city council. And I remember thinking, yay, absolutely, what a wonderful choice she would be for the City of Sonora. Such a good choice, I would like to say. And on that note, I knew that these were two people who would serve with true love for this town, its history, and its, the life that we all want to see flourish. And I want to thank Jim also for his service on the Social Equity Committee, helping that committee to get started. And I think that together and with the rocky roads and such that that entity presented to all of us, the Social Equity Committee has given us a really important opportunity to strengthen who we are as a community and to become more determined about the efficacy and the dedication to honoring the many, many people who make up this community and its diverse history. So thank you to both of you for that and for your service on the council. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, BZ. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak before I turn it over to the audience in here? Okay, then I will turn it over to the audience in here. Would anyone like to come up and speak on this matter? Okay. I can't imagine why all these people are in here tonight. I just, yeah. Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council. Jim, I'll just say, in 2014, you beat me by eight votes, and I decided to come back and run again, and working with you has been great. You know, a lot of the public doesn't know, it's interesting, like I was saying about Councilmember Such earlier, you know, sometimes the finger pointing or the politics gets in the way, but you've had nothing but a heart for the city. You look at things differently than many people do, and there's a real appreciation for that. I've watched you debate other council members, including myself, and you may agree with me, but you're trying to push also what other people might think on the issue. So you'll actually debate something you may disagree with just because you feel the people were underrepresented, and I don't, I don't think that has ever been appreciated enough, and I think that once you're gone, it's really going to be like, really appreciated. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your friendship over the last 12 years. The first time I met Jim, he whispers to the back of me, we're sitting right out there in the middle, and he says, so, Mr. Councilmember wannabe, what do you think about this? And it was something to do with health insurance and the council at the time, and like, who is this jerk, you know? And then I got to know him. And then I got to know him, so.
And you still said, "Who is this jerk?"
Yeah, yeah, I still do. But it's, it's been great. It's been, honestly, it's been, it's been really great to work with you. I can't believe you're gone, you're leaving, and it's like, wow. So I guess I'll ask for any other comments unless the council, looking for a motion in a second.
There was, there was a little hint of it from Ann, but just the, the, the historical knowledge, with the former councilman Ron Stern gone, Jim sort of filled that void. And without either of them, I, I feel that we will be a poorer council historically and keeping some of the things in mind that those of us who aren't native, either are weaker on or never even thought of. So that's something that I have also really appreciated from working with you on this council. So that will be enormously missed. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution 752022-E, recognizing James Garaventa for his contribution and service to the City of Sonora.
I'll second that.
I'll third.
Okay. Motion by-
You can finish in third.
Well, I mean, am I left out of this?
Quicker, quicker.
Motion by Mayor Protem Plummer, second by Councilmember Sutch, and third by Councilmember Seigestrom. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Jim, you're not gonna do a no?
No, I'm not gonna do it.
Any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. So thank you, thank you both.
Yep. All that, and you're not done yet. I said, "All that, and they're not done yet."
Not, not yet, but close.
Somebody's ringing.
Okay, so before public comment, I would actually like to call for a moment of silence, if we could. Many of you probably knew him in one way, shape, or form. He had an effect on just about everybody's life in this county, and he pretty much kept himself. He was a dear friend of mine, actually one of my best friends ever, and he passed away, I believe it was last week, D. Stanfeld. Yeah, so I didn't think it'd be the last time I'd be mayor on this council, I'd be announcing his death. But I was actually away in Virginia and couldn't get to his funeral or anything. I had no idea he'd fallen at home. If you have elderly neighbors, check on him every so often. He fell at home and laid there for a couple days, and then his son-in-law found him. And yeah, it's not a way to go, so try not to cry here. But I still haven't come to grips with it yet. Yes, he was almost 90 years old, but he was somebody that had a tremendous impact on my life. And honestly, I probably wouldn't be here or married to my wife if it hadn't been for him. A lot of council, you talk about wise council. He was a real estate agent for years. He worked for PG&E for like 35 years. Honest to goodness, he probably sold 10% of the houses in this county, and everyone he sold to, he, he did not get people complaining about him. It was always, you know, integrity. He was the, they called him the chief. I never did, because that- That's okay. But he, he was the chief of the Tuolumne Band of Cherokee Indians, or the president, but a lot of people called him chief. He just did a lot for our community. He cared for a lot of people. He donated huge amounts of money to things and wouldn't say a word to anyone. And you only found out 20 years later type of thing, because you'd find, you know, his name on something that, you know, and he didn't even mean for that to happen. So, you know, I would like to take a moment of silence for him, just to honor his legacy in this county. And if you knew him, you'd, you'd understand exactly what I mean, so. Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. Okay, so on to a public comment for non-agenda items. If anyone would like to make a comment, the public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed up subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. If participating via Zoom, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or dial *9*6 to unmute. So before we start calling on the members on Zoom, I just wanted to let everyone know the reason the agenda is put together this way, because I've had a few questions about it while we're not immediately setting the new council members. There, there's nothing funny or what hinky going on. It's the fact that this is old business, that this council needs to finish up. Things were discussed in closed sessions, some other things that happened in open sessions. This is a way for this council to complete our work. I had asked for the agenda to be done this way, and then city staff and the council member, or the council had agreed at one point. So that is why there's nothing funny or weird, and nobody's trying to keep anyone out of anything going on. So I just wanted everyone to know that. So with that, public comment for Zoom. Let's see, BZ Smith has her hand up.
Here I am again. So a couple of things that I'm just gonna roll into one statement. Today, we all had smoky skies because of the electric fire in Calaveras and Amador County, again centering around the same area where the Butte Fire took place so many years ago, or so many, well, not that many years ago, really, about eight years ago, where so many homes were lost and such devastation in that part of really our own region of California. And so I think today with the smoky skies, it was really an important opportunity to remember the critical nature of fire protection in and around Sonora. I think we have an obligation to the residents of the town and to the town itself to do everything that we can to protect and preserve the lovely, beautiful town that we all have chosen to make our home from the devastating effects of fire by, by finding some way to make a defensible ring around the fire that can prevent us from getting as frightening event as we had last year with the Washington Fire. And we're so blessed to live in a place that has so much history, as both Pat and Sharon have reminded us this evening, and thank you for that honor of them. We just have to always put forward the horrible cost that would come to all of us if a fire were come, were to come rushing through our area, as has happened in Paradise and in other small foothill towns and in our region of California again. And keep in mind what we have to do next. And so I end with that, and I thank you for all the work that you guys do, and I look forward to the new council picking up the torch of protecting our town and protecting the diverse cultural history of the City of Sonora. Thank you.
Thank you, BZ. Hey, Pat.
Okay, I would like to just address something that has kind of gotten to me about this council. As everybody knows, we live in a tremendously divided country. Our, our county also reflects that. That's nothing, it, we're no different from the rest of the country, really. We are a microcosm. And I would like to say to the mayor, and also to Mark, who's going to be mayor, you know, you, you both seem to bring up discord among council members. And I know you're saying it in a friendly way, but it's natural for people on a board to disagree. That is a natural thing. And if they, if everybody agreed, they wouldn't be making any well-thought-out decisions. So I, I don't think that's, that's helpful, really. And, you know, divisiveness is here. Let's do what we can to mend that, that gap. I think it's really important to talk about how we, we do agree, we, we, we want, as BZ said, we want the best for our community. So that's, that's the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, so we will bring it to the audience in here. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? Ah, Katie.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Katie Dunn, I'm the president of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and I have a couple things I wanted to share with you. First is, in, in 2017, there was a passage of Assembly Bill 1221. And what this did was created the Responsible Beverage Service Training Act. And the alcoholic beverage control was to create the Responsible Beverage Service Training Program and mandate a new training requirement for organizations that obtain a temporary daily on-sale license and/or a temporary daily off-sale general license. So beginning July 1 of 2022, any entity that has obtained a temporary daily on-sale license or temporary daily off-sale license from the ABC will designate someone who has received RBS training and completed an online ABC-administered exam. They will be required to remain on-site for the duration of the event. It's a three-step certification process. You register with the ABC as a server on their portal. You take the RBS training from an approved RBS training provider, and then you take the ABC's Alcohol Service Certification Exam. I would like to let you know that I have completed. Thank you. And we also have two other board members who will be completing this certification program. So I wanted to share that with you. Also, this Saturday is Second Saturday, and burn permit will be the band performing at Caulfield Park. It is sponsored by, actually, Second Saturday is sponsored by Visit to Tuolumne County. And our concert series is being sponsored by Tim Moyle of Berkshire Hathaway Drysdale Properties. So I wanted to share that with you, 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. Something new that is also happening with Second Saturday is that the Sonora Chamber took out a special use permit for Leinaburg West. It's between Green and Washington Street. So we are moving our pop-up marketplace from the, in front of the taproom and the Diamondback over to that side will have eight pop-ups. So we kind of grew out of that space while there wasn't really a lot of space with the tables. So we're moving over to that side of the, of the, of the street, Leinaburg West. So that'll be happening this, this weekend. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions, and I'm down to the second.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
So, does that, you're now newly being licensed and proud for it, mean we will still be able to buy wine and beer at the dance?
Well, of course, but you may, yes, of course.
No, I'm-
Yes.
I'm trying to help you advertise.
Yeah. Yes, oh, oh, I get it. Oh, okay, yes.
I'm pouring the lead there, sorry.
Yes, yes, there will be beer and wine available. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, for such a large group, y'all are very quiet, so. Okay, so I guess I will move on from there to the consent calendar. Make sure I got my pages correct here. Okay, items on the consent calendar considered routine will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, item will be removed from the consent calendar, considered separately. Number six, authorize the mayor to sign the collective partnership agreement letter in support of the Community Economic Resilience Fund, SURF, proposal submitted by the Sierra Business Council for the Eastern Sierra Region. Consider approval of the City-County Five-Year Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan and authorize submission of the plan to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Melissa Eads, City Administrator. Number eight, consideration adoption of Resolution Number 752022B, accepting the finding of the Industrial Disability Retirement Pursuit to Government Code, Section 21156. Chris Gorsky, Administrative Services Director. Item number nine, consideration of adoption of Resolution 752022F, approving the Confidential Employees Association, CEA, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, Melissa Eads, City Administrator. Item number 10, approval of disbursements in the amount of $152,371.56 for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, holiday pay, and other adjustments, including retro pay. Tracy Skelly, Administrative Analyst. Okay. Any discussion on any of these council members? Okay, then I will ask for any public comment on these, starting with Zoom first. Nothing there? Anyone in the audience? Okay, so I will bring it back to the council for any further discussion or a motion and a second.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Plummer, second by Councilmember Garavenna. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? I can turn my head a little better, this is great. Okay, public hearings. Number 11, consideration ordinances regarding to the protection of critical infrastructure and health and hygiene of camps. Melissa Eads, City Administrator, Doug White, City Attorney. Number one under this, motion to waive a reading of urgency ordinance, number 844, reading by title only, waiving further reading and adoption of urgency ordinance of the City Council, uh, City Council of the City of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter 9.61, protection of critical infrastructure and fire severity zone of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare. Number two, motion to waive reading of urgency ordinance, number 845, reading by title only, waiving further reading and adoption of an ordinance, urgency ordinance to the City Council of the City of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code 9.62, health and hygiene of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare. Number three, waive reading, read by title only, and introduce the first reading in ordinance to the City Council of the City of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code 9.62, 61, protection of critical infrastructure and fire severity zone of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare. One more. Waive reading, number four, waive reading by title only and introduce for first reading in ordinance to the City Council of the City of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter 9.62, health and hygiene of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare. Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you are aware, as the city is aware, we have experienced a rise in homelessness over the past years. The point in time count as of 2022 was at 266, with 34% of that total within the city limits of Sonora. The city has approximately 50% of the county's chronic homeless individuals, and it's estimated that recently, approximately, and Chief can correct me, I always get this number wrong, but nearly 25% of calls to PD are somewhat related to homelessness. As you are aware, the council has taken several steps since I have been appointed as the interim city administrator over the past few months. One of those being the appointment of Chief Vanderwill to the Commission on Homelessness. And since working with the chief, the Commission on Homelessness and council members, our approach to this issue has been to foster both compassionate yet accountable policies and practices. And that's what we hope to present to you tonight, is the accumulation of those efforts and that work. Our action over the past several months have been necessitated by several actions. The growing rise in homelessness is the obvious, but also the cleanup efforts of the county of Camp Hope. And recently, as the council is aware, there will be cleanup efforts at three encampments on Stockton Road and Wiglam Road in the upcoming week that we feel will further put pressure on city infrastructure and city facilities. And in preparation of that, we want to make sure that we are preparing the community, our infrastructure ourselves, to have the policies and practices to best accommodate the needs of our unsheltered, but also the needs of our community. We've also worked collaboratively with the county, law enforcement, ATCA, and other agencies to bring supportive services, offering law enforcement different tools in their toolbox with mobile outreach and encouragement of services as well. As I mentioned, you are aware- As I mentioned, you are aware that Caltrans is moving forward with the cleanup encampments. And we believe that that will take effect between July 11th and 15th. The city's been engaged in building this multifaceted approach in the preparation of this cleanup. Some of that approach has included the police department working with our Tuolumne County Visitors Bureau on the creation of a resource toolkit. We've aimed that effort at education and information for our community as to how best to handle the needs of this growing social issue. We've partnered with the county on several fronts, and I'm grateful for their collaboration. As you recently approved the PLH Plan and Funds, which will bring much-needed case management services to law enforcement, as I mentioned, offering them more tools in their toolkit as they work with individuals in crisis in our encampments. The county Health and Human Services Department is providing supportive services to city encampments and ATCA referrals to shelter options. We're also working in partnership with the Tuolumne County Transportation Commission to provide much-needed transportation services. Our chief of police has also submitted a letter of intent for grant funding to the continuum of care to create a multidisciplinary approach and a team effort towards providing a mobile navigation center to the encampments and to the locations where homeless individuals are living and located, as we also work to provide an increased capacity for bed availability and the low-barrier shelter space. The city also has $700,000 in low-income housing funds to continue our investment in the Stewart Street Shelter. And we will be issuing an RFP for the architectural and design services shortly. And finally, here we are with the request for consideration of the urgency ordinance and also the reading of the first ordinances in support of promoting healthy, safe, and hygienic infrastructure and community facilities. I'd like to turn it over to Andrew, who will go over the ordinances specifically in summary. And then we both are happy to answer any questions that you might have after his review.
Good evening, council. So the ordinances to have before you will address concerns of encampments as well as the concerns over encampments near critical infrastructure. The concerns with encampments is the hygiene. And camping around critical infrastructure harms potentially city services due to the critical nature of the infrastructure to city services. So there's two ordinances before the council tonight. The first ordinance is the Critical Infrastructure Protection Ordinance that will address the threats to public health and safety due to encampments near critical infrastructure sites. That ordinance will declare it a public nuisance for any person to camp within 25 feet of critical infrastructure, within 25 feet of a vehicular or pedestrian entrance or exit of critical infrastructure, in portions of right-of-way that are required by law to be free of obstructions to first responders, and in areas designated as fire severity zones. The city will enforce this ordinance through an abatement procedure, which the city will provide 72-hour notice before pursuing that option. The 72-hour notice will be to the persons in the encampments. There is a mechanism for the city to use if there is an emergency where the city can pursue summary abatement without prior notice. The second ordinance before the council is the Health and Hygiene Ordinance that will address the health and hygiene concerns of encampments. The Health and Hygiene Ordinance authorizes the Public Works Department to carry out clean and clear operations of encampments to prevent the buildup of hazardous waste, illegal dumping, infectious waste, refuse, or solid waste. Again, the mechanism to enforce that is a 72-hour notice to affected occupants. Any property left at the campsite during the clean and clear operations will be considered abandoned and subject to disposal. Unabandoned and temporarily unattended items will be collected for safe and storage and retrieval by occupants unless the items are not safe for storage. And the ordinance also allows the city to close encampments permanently if it poses a threat to health and safety. City staff and legal have worked to ensure that the ordinances comply with federal and state laws regarding regulations of encampments that the city can pursue, as well as what the city can do with regards to property at those encampments. And due to the public health, safety, and welfare of camps, you know, critical infrastructure and the health and safety concerns of the encampments, the city staff recommends that the city adopt it through an urgency ordinance. As an urgency ordinance, the ordinance will take effect immediately. That will require a four-fifths vote of the city council. And city staff also recommend that the ordinance should be adopted through the regular process in case a court does not, concludes that this is not, does not oppose an immediate threat to public health and safety. So at this meeting, the city council will consider introduction of the ordinances. And at another regular city council meeting, the city council will adopt the ordinance. And that will only require a majority vote of the council. And that will take effect 30 days after adoption. And with that, I am willing to take any questions from the council.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Segas, your turn.
So with this vote, we aren't adopting the ordinances?
You want to go? You want me to go?
So with this vote, with the four-fifths vote, you will be adopting it as an urgency ordinance. The ordinance will take effect immediately. But you are using a backup procedure just in case a court concludes that this encampment issue does not pose an immediate threat to public health and safety. And that's why you're going through, you're doing two procedures. You're doing an urgency ordinance procedure and as well as the regular ordinance adoption procedure.
So staff's purpose and intent for that was so that we were effectively prepared to deal with the camp and cleanups that are scheduled in the upcoming week. That's the reason for the urgency ordinance and continue through the public hearing process on the adoption of the regular ordinances.
And does that put the city on, or, so, actually, it's a statement more for the public. But my belief is then that that puts the city on relatively safe ground for enforcement going with the urgency ordinances. But we're just backing it up even though they will be running concurrently until a regular ordinance is passed or denied.
That's right. So the legal believes that there is very firm legal ground to adopt the urgency ordinance through a four-fifths vote of the council. But just in case, we recommend that the regular process be used as well.
Thank you.
Any other council member questions? Okay.
I'm looking forward to audience comments.
Yes. So we will go to Zoom first. And then I see Nicole Hurtado.
Hi, I work for California Policy Research. I'm also a housing specialist. I live in Sonora, California. I lived here for about 20 years. I do have a question about what a public nuisance means, whether these people are going to be fined or arrested. If someone could answer that for me.
So what we'll do, we'll get some questions and everything. And then what we'll do is we'll answer after all the public comment is over with because probably many of the questions are going to be the same. So let's go ahead and do it that way. And then we'll go from there. But you did get her question, right?
I did get it.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you, Nicole, wherever she went. Okay, next is BZ Smith.
My one concern is, well, several, but initially, if this is an urgency ordinance that's put into place at this exact moment with passage tonight, how will the people who will be most affected by this be informed? How will they know that you're just not coming in and running roughshod over what they're trying to do to just survive? And will there be some sort of procedure that's taken to inform them that this is an urgency situation and that the regular ordinance will come into play later? It was a question, I know you don't have an answer, but I did want to bring that concern forward. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And I think we'll get some of that answered. Okay, next is Dana.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so my concern with this is that I read the ordinance and I listened to the presentation just now from Andrew. And I may be missing it, but it sounds like there is a plan to clear out some number of people from certain areas on the basis that they are posing an environmental threat. And if I'm getting that wrong, let me know. But I didn't hear what is the alternative location provided. And I know that that is probably something that was looked at pretty carefully from your legal, considering the Boise precedent about not being able to remove people from public lands without offering some kind of accessible, available alternate shelter. So if you could speak more to the plan for what comes after the proposal to clean up certain areas, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you got that one also?
I got it.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, then I will go to the audience here. So not everyone come up at once. Anyone like to speak? Tom?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council. Now, I was initially, as I found this on the agenda late on Friday, as everyone else did in the public, I was initially a little bit concerned about the level of coordination between, potentially, between the city and the county. And did some additional investigation today, spent some time talking with Sarah and others, and learned that there was, in fact, some coordination between the city and the county. And I just wanted to recognize the fact that this is being split into an urgency motion to deal with the logistics of something that's happening outside the city control. And I appreciate that. And that we will have an additional 30 days or so for more public review, participation, and consideration by this council and the new council members. So I just wanted to mention that, that my fears are somewhat reduced about the need to coordinate between city and county particularly when we're just moving people potentially from one location to another location. And I also learned that ATCA is engaged to help settle some of the individuals. So just wanted to mention all that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Segas, your turn.
I did have a conversation with Melissa about this today because I was concerned about how the unsheltered individuals would be informed about these ordinances. And I have found out that there is signage, I guess, already in process. And so it will be communicated to them. Because that was a huge concern, that, you know, all of a sudden, the boom is lowered. But we aren't really lowering the boom. It's Caltrans lowering the boom. So we're just trying to be prepared in advance.
Councilmember Sutch?
And I also want to just confirm that although the camps are being disrupted, that the residents can sleep in city parks. Or, you know, we're still allowing them to sleep somewhere. They just can't stay beyond overnight. Is that correct?
So that was the concern and the expectation. As Camp Hope was cleared, what we found is populations moved across the highway to the Caltrans property. We saw those encampments begin to grow. I believe the Wigwam encampment began to grow as well. And so the issue with that being during summer with cooking happening in these heavily wooded brushy areas, that these areas surrounding the city of Sonora are a high-fire severity zone and something that we are all concerned about. So the purpose and intent is not to criminalize homelessness. It is still to have an expectation that people need rest and they need sleep, and they need a place for that rest and sleep if they are unhoused. And so we anticipate movement more towards city facilities, which is the purpose for our expectation of the clean and clear and the critical infrastructure. We need to be able to protect and promote overall public health and safety. So we want to make sure that in the movement of those individuals at a more high-fire severity zones, that we are not degradating other areas of critical infrastructure, which will also be a process that is brought back for public review, unless it's an emergency declaration, for example, during fire season. And then also keep people who are unhoused out of these wooded areas. So if they find themselves in parks, the parks will be noticed that they are areas that will be clean and cleared on a regular basis. That schedule will be provided for them. They will be also then verbally and in writing given notice of those clean and clear dates when they are there or on city properties that need to be maintained. So that way, we can prevent the accumulation of debris and the accumulation of garbage that becomes the issue for our community overall and becomes unsafe for everyone in terms of fire danger. So that is the purpose and intent. Those encampment cleanups, they are Level 2, which means that they can go through the process. They're not an immediate risk where notification can be given. So Caltrans will be going through with a 72-hour notice. We are providing county supportive services. ATCA is also providing shelter options and hotel vouchers for those that are eligible. As we mentioned, transportation alternatives will be provided for those who will be seeking shelter elsewhere. And for those who we anticipate may find themselves within the city limits and out of those high-fire severity zones, then we anticipate to have these clean and clear policies in place whereby we can get rid of the accumulation of debris, but fully expect those individuals to return after that clean and clear practice has been initiated. So that is our purpose and intent. I hope that answers your question. It was a long way around, wasn't it?
It was a good answer. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask, unless the council members, I'm trying to get all the questions up first so we could get our legal team. But are there any other questions that council has? Or at least right now, so, go ahead.
So if it's okay with you, Andrew, do you mind taking the one about the fines and arresting? And then also the Boise case?
Perfect. With regards to the first question with regards to the public nuisance question, that will, the reason why we declare these encampments as public nuisances is because it allows the city to pursue the abatement procedure. So it allows them to clear encampments around critical infrastructure and as well as clean and clear operations within encampments due to the hygiene issues. It also allows the city to pursue legal remedies through fines and other legal remedies available to the city if the abatement orders aren't followed. But I do not believe that is the city's intent to pursue those legal remedies first. The abatement procedures is the focus of this ordinance. With regards to the Boise case, again, as Melissa noted, there are going to be, the city is going to try to provide alternatives for those encampments. The Boise case does allow for prohibitions of encampments around, in specific places due to public health and safety. And that is what these ordinances will do.
Is that all the questions that were added? Unfortunately, I didn't write them all down, but that was, yeah.
So how will people be informed of the procedure? So in coordination with Caltrans, we are really just coordinating and supporting Caltrans with the supportive services that we have access to locally. So they have already gone out and notified the residents of the encampment of the cleanup procedure and its schedule. Then the county will be coming out later this week. They will have boots on the ground multiple days this week to provide those supportive services and the referrals to ATCA. And then on the day of the encampment cleanups, they will also have staff staged conveniently nearby should people be leaving those encampments and decide at that moment in time that they would like support or services or housing options, they will be able to make those referrals. And then we will have transportation dial-a-ride on standby as well on the days of those encampment cleanups. Two of the encampments are being cleaned up. cleanups. Two of the encampments will be located within the city limits and one outside of the city limits near Jamestown, I believe. And so that is how people are being notified in terms of as encampments move into the city limits and city infrastructure. As I mentioned, we will have signs posting what our expectation and our ordinances are, and when the clean and clear procedures will be followed. And then if there is abandoned property, that will be taken care of. And then the expectation is that should people further need sleep, that they would be returning to that location. Again, it's basically to provide for overall safety, to prevent the accumulation of debris and garbage and unsafe conditions within our community parks and facilities. The writing to ours will be not only just the signs, but we will give 72 hours notice to the individuals as well. And then also our public works crews, possibly myself and other city staff, will be verbally letting them know of our cleanup ordinances and our procedure. There will be a process whereby if they wish to appeal this, that will also be noticed on the signs and the notification that they receive. And then should they have any, I'm sorry, abandoned, what's the word that I'm looking for?
Unabandoned.
Unattended.
Unattended.
Thank you. Unattended property, the way that they could go about securing their unattended property. And as you'll see, we have an internal policy for how we will work a staff to define abandoned versus unattended, and we will notify them in signs as well of that information.
Okay, so I think I answered everything. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot like that. Because I was discussing with you earlier, I always ask the attorney first, so.
I'm just happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Excellent. Are there any council member questions on this? Okay, so I'll just basically make kind of a public statement with all of this. With all of the issues, all the fire dangers, we've had to do something. We've had no choice. It is not illegal to be homeless. It's not unconstitutional to be, you can be homeless. What's wrong and what's immoral is if you're using the, under the guise of homelessness in order to do harm to others, just like anything else. You can drive your car and do harm to others. That's illegal also. You can do all kinds of horrible things. So we're not trying to make homelessness illegal, because I know that's going to be the big question I'm going to get, and I'm sure the rest of the council members are going to get. But we have to do something to protect our city. We have a huge fire danger. By the grace of God, we didn't get burnt down, you know, during the Washington Fire. We did lose several historic structures and other things during the Washington Fire, and thank God, no lives. But we have to do something. The public is demanding something, and we just need to do something. So this is a great start. We're following the law. We're following the, I mean, we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, and we are doing what is morally and ethically right. But something has to be done, and this is an excellent start. So again, I'm all for this, and I expect we're going to see some other things. If anyone would like to have a conversation afterwards about this with me, I would be glad to talk about it. But we have to do something. So that's all I have. Anyone else? If not, that's okay. I'll look for a motion in a second.
So, in addition to being the law, all of us support respecting everyone's civil rights and that. So in the past, civil rights have often been ignored in the effort to get rid of vagrants or move them along. And that's something that I think none of us would support, even if effective. So we are trying to deal with a thorny issue in as humane a way possible, but we also have to deal with the very real public dangers that are posed by affluent going into our creeks and rivers, the possible fire dangers, and the other public health hazards posed by some of these camps. Just wanted to push the civil rights and respecting people's constitutional rights.
Rochelle?
Sorry, Ms. Riff.
That's okay.
Just caught this in my attention. I went and verified if the ordinance numbers are wrong on here. So the urgency ordinance should actually be number 885, and the urgency order, the next one should be 886. Those are the next two ordinance numbers for the city.
I'm not rereading that, it's the whole thing.
Okay.
I'm just gonna note that.
I just noticed, or I would have said something earlier. Sorry, guys.
That's one and two?
885 and 886.
Thank you. And I definitely concur with the mayor pro tem. You know, civil rights are a big deal. I mean, that's why our constitution was set up, civil rights, you know, to kick the British out of the country and have our own set of rights that are inalienable and given to us by God. And that's a very, very important thing. So I'm not going to go on and on and keep talking, but I just, like I said, we have to do something. We're a huge amount of fire danger coming up, and people need to be treated with respect. So I think this is going to be something that'll work. So, councilmember Sutch?
I have a question about, and it's page 82 in the document. At the bottom of the page, it's number, it's letter C. It says, "It is not intended by this section to prohibit overnight camping on private residential property by friends or family of the property owner, so long as the owner consents, and overnight camping is limited to the period that the owner has given their consent. All overnight camping on private residential property within city is subject to applicable building and fire codes under Sonora Municipal Code and prohibitions of the use of trailers and mobile homes as set forth in Title 17 of the Sonora Municipal Code." Is there any way we could loosen the ability, I mean, right now you cannot have a trailer, someone living in a trailer on an undeveloped piece of property? Like a travel trailer, and I think that's against the ordinance. But there are a lot of travel trailers out there, and I just wonder if there is a way the city could open up some housing possibilities by allowing, I mean, not tonight, but by allowing that a travel trailer, because that's not permitted. At least, I think it's not permitted for more than 30 days at a time, I think.
So I would refer to Rochelle Kellogg with that question.
Sorry, Rochelle.
I'm gonna put you on the spot again.
She knows this. I just think it's a, just could add some.
You are correct, in the city of Sonora, you cannot have a travel trailer on your property, having people living in it. All permanent residents in the city have to be on a permanent foundation. So it is not allowed under the code. So in the future, if it's something council wants us to look at, there is a public process that would go with that, and the public would have an opportunity to comment.
Okay. I just would ask future councils to consider that, because it does open up some housing that's not available.
VC, your microphone is on. I just love her. Okay, so, okay, I needed that little bit of comedic relief. That was great. Is there any other questions or looking for, I guess, a motion in a second?
How do you make this motion? Do you go through all four of them, or?
Mr. City Attorney, you could probably say move on staff for a motion.
I would recommend that we take each item, or at least, I would recommend that the city, let's just take each item and make a motion on each item.
Okay. So with that, I guess I'm looking for a motion and a second on number 11-1.
I move to approve item 1 of Section 11, motion to waive reading of urgency ordinance number 885. Is that correct? Okay, 885, reading by title only, waiving further reading and adoption of an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter 9.61, protection of critical infrastructure and fire severity zone of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, second by Councilmember Segasstrom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero?
So, just a question. Oh, it's unanimous. This was by roll call in the.
Oh, because it's a public hearing.
This is a.
I would actually recommend that you do it through a roll call vote, because we do need the record for the fourth vote.
Right. And it was, yeah, in our packet, it was by roll call.
Yes, so this part is a little new to me, so.
It's probably anticipated that someone was going to be on Zoom.
Yes. Okay, so.
I'm glad that person isn't.
Well, we'll do the, we'll do the roll call vote. We had a motion and a second, so roll call, vote please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Public hearing, he recommended.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segasstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. The city attorney recommended it, so I just.
Okay.
Okay, so under public hearing, number 11, item number 11, number two, look for a motion in a second.
So move to waive the first reading, waive reading of the urgency ordinance number 886. Rochelle?
Yes.
Okay. Reading by title only and waiving further reading and adoption of urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter 9.62. Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Garaventa, second by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segasstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Number three, look for a motion in a second.
I'll move to waive the reading and read by title only and introduce the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter 9.61, protection of critical infrastructure and fire severity zone of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Segasstrom, second by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segasstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Now, on to number four. For a motion in a second.
I move to waive, on item four, to waive the reading and introduce the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonora, adding Sonora Municipal Code, Chapter 9.62, health and hygiene of Title IX, public peace, morals, and welfare.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, second by Councilmember Garaventa. Roll call.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segasstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Okay, on to public hearing, number 12. Consider adoption of Resolution 752022(c), establishing an encampment management policy for the city of Sonora, addressing public health and safety concerns and vulnerabilities to critical infrastructure caused by growing homelessness crisis in Sonora. Melissa Eads, city administrator, Doug White, city attorney.
Thank you. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution establishing our implementation and management policy for the two recently adopted ordinances. Andrew and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have about the policy as attached.
Okay, so I'll go to Zoom, see if there's any questions. Oh, I guess I should ask for counsel first. Sorry, I think the ibuprofen's starting to wear off. Okay, so are there any questions? Okay, then I will go to Zoom and see if there are any questions, and we'll come back. Any Zoom questions? Comments?
Comments.
Okay, so I will move to the audience, see if there's any questions or comments. Oh, come on up.
I'm Jeanette Lambert with the David Lambert Community Dropping Center. My question is, will I get a list of options that I can present to them as they come to the center, because they'll all be asking about this? And if I have a list, I can give them some of the options that they have? Is that a possibility that I can get that?
So yes, and we will also be publishing those options and those services on the signs that we provide and the notices that we provide. And those lists of options are both, excuse me, I'm looking for the attachment, information that we've provided in our business toolkit. And it'll include our, the shelters and ATCA referrals. So ATCA, the Sonora office, and they will work with our Washington Street Shelter, and Chris Neves there. Also, the Center for Nonviolent Community Shelter location and their numbers, and also the Lambert Community Center is a location that we will be providing as well.
Okay, if I can have a list so that I can have that to talk to when they come. And you can print them all you want to and put them on all those things, but if we really want to get it out to them, it's when they come to us. It will be way more productive than just posting it. They probably won't even read this stuff. So if you have it there, I can work with them, each one of them, as they come there, to give them the options and try to help them get this taken care of before the deadline.
We'd be happy to.
Sure.
We'd be happy to.
So, yeah, I just want to say something really quick. I really appreciate the amount of work you've done in our community. You're very humble, and I don't think that the community really knows how much work you do, and how much really good work that you do in really trying to help people who are less fortunate. So I personally want to say thank you.
It's not just me, but I have a lot of wonderful volunteers, so I don't want to be impressive. We have a great job on Friday. We've been doing it for almost 25 years.
You do an excellent job, and the city appreciates you. Okay, is there anyone else? Oh, come on up. I have no idea who this guy is.
First and foremost, I just wanted to congratulate the city council, whoever authored the encampment management plan, I think, did a great job in writing in very clear, easy-to-understand language what both we as, you know, people who might not be homeless can come to expect from city services and also those who are homeless and unsheltered. It basically gives us a playbook to where if something comes up, I think it does a great job of itemizing, hey, you know, you can come and get your belongings, we want to treat people with dignity. And furthermore, it puts the obligation on the city to provide resources that these people can go and access if needed to, which I think is huge. I just wanted to say this is a great piece of legislation. I hope you all approve it.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council for any questions, comments, or motion in a second.
Okay, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 070-05-2022(c), establishing an encampment management policy for the city of Sonora, addressing public health and safety concerns and vulnerabilities to critical infrastructure caused by growing homelessness, the growing homelessness crisis in Sonora.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Segasstrom, second by Councilmember Sutch. Roll call, please. Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Talking to me. Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segasstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch?
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Thank you, council. I want to thank the public for their patience. So there's no unfinished business. On to new business. This is what y'all have been waiting for. Okay, new business number 13. Consider adoption of Resolution 752022(a) certifying the results and declaring those elected for the June 7, 2022, general municipal election for city officers. Tracy Skelly, administrative analyst.
The city general municipal election was.
The city general municipal election was held Tuesday, June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, for the election of two members to the office of city council. The election code requires that votes be canvassed and certified by the election official. As a consolidated election, this task is performed for the city by the county clerk and auditor controller. Upon the receipt of the election results, the city elections official, the city clerk, shall certify the results to the governing body, the city council. Before installing the new officers, the governing body shall adopt a resolution declaring elected persons receiving the highest number of votes cast for each office. The city has received the certification and canvas of votes for the election from the county clerk and auditor controller. The city clerk verifies these results, at which time the city needs to adopt a resolution seven zero five two zero two two A, Enumerating the Results of the June seventh, two, uh, twenty twenty-two General Municipal Election and Declaring Those Elected.
Excellent. Any questions, council members? Okay, so I asked for any public comment on this? Okay, any Zoom comment? Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
Move to adopt Resolution zero seven zero five twenty twenty-two dash A, Certifying the Results and Declaring Those Elected for the June seventh, twenty twenty-two General Municipal Election for City Officers.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Garaventa, second by Mayor Pro Tim Plummer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. Now comes the big one. New business number fourteen, Administrative, Administration of Oath of Office for Elected City Officials, the City Administrator and the City Clerk, Councilmember Sutch. So, um, can we explain the Councilmember Sutch part on here so that the public knows?
Sure. Councilmember Sutch is serving as our city clerk, and so with that, I would like to ask that our city clerk, Councilmember Sutch, deliver the oath of office, and, uh, we can all stand together, if that is the will of the group. And, uh, I would invite Councilmember Suzanne Cruz and Andy Merrill up front, and then if we can all stand, just in place. Sure, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, Suzanne.
Yeah, I think...
So Councilmember Sutch will deliver the oath.
Yeah, just the people taking the oath of office.
Get over there by the camera.
So I'm going to ask that you raise your right hand in a minute, and I'm going to start out by saying aye, and then I, I will just say aye, and then you say aye, and say your name. And then for the rest of the, of it, you just say what I say. So. Aye.
Aye.
Melissa Eads. You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I, I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
So, at this time, we're going to take a break, congratulate everybody. I want to really, again, thank these two councilmembers that are now outgoing. I really appreciate everything, and, yeah, let's take a break, about fifteen minutes.
So we move off, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have their hand tags? Good luck.
Thank you.
Every time I think about you, I think about this.
But that's not so great. The guy who did that on the whole beer, the whole beer. An apartment surprise. Yeah, that happens. She would not be there. But sorry. I thought it was true. I find it strange.
And I can't quite catch it. Hello? We've got Hank back here for the celebrating process. So if you'd like a piece of cake, come back and get it. I think Mayor Protem is ready to cut it. No. Free food, there is free food in the back.
No, no, I don't prefer. It's not my cake.
Right now, it's just.
Yeah, like I said.
Yeah, we're gonna share this. It's hard for me. You can blame her. I'm so right on it, right? I just say.
I don't like using the hammer very much.
Yeah, welcome.
Thor's hammer.
Okay, so we are back from our break at 7:23 PM.
And now it's the appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem and discussions of commission and committee appointments. Before I start this process, I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank the city of Sonora, our staff for being so patient with me over the last two years, all the craziness that's happened. It's been a real adventure and I'm happy to pass the gavel and at the same time, I'm saddened at the same time. So with that, appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem and discussions of committee and committee appointments. Melissa, is there anything you wanted to read or I'll start the process?
If you don't mind starting the process, Mayor, I would appreciate that.
Okay, so typically in the past, and I stated this, I think, two years ago, the council started trading positions and keeping things on a turns basis. It's only deviated from that once or twice in the past about 50 years, so I think since about 1968 or 72. So at this time, I would like to nominate the mayor pro tem, Mark Plummer, as our next mayor. I know he'll do a great job. I look forward to working with him and proud to call him my friend, like the debate we have sometimes. And I know the city's in good hands with him, so at that time, I would like to nominate Mark. And then I guess if there's any council discussion and then I will ask for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'd just like to say that I know Mark has been looking forward to this day. I think he's been, what's the word I'm looking for, educating himself and diving deeply into city matters and protocol. And he'll do a great job and we might, might have to cut him off sometimes.
A full water bottle, if you, if you put it in the freezer, you can just throw it out. But so I guess with that, I will ask for any public comment? Any public comment? I'm gonna look at Zoom. Yes, I was gonna get the public comment before the, the second. So, thank you. So I gotta say, for, for our former mayor and my friend, council member, former council member Garavenna, has really helped me out along the way. And I'm probably gonna get text messages from him every so often, you know, telling me what I need to do and I really do appreciate that. So I don't see any public comment from the audience, but I do see one on Zoom from BZ Smith.
Well, here I go. First of all, I want to welcome our two new council members to this very important job that keeps our city rolling and going. And one thing that I would just like to remind everybody and particularly you, Mayor Protem, is that this office is neither Republican nor Democrat. In the past, many times, Mark, you have mentioned, that's the Democrats, that's the Democrats. And the truth of it is, we need to remember that the city council is a non-partisan office. And I would like us all to remember that every time we are assembled and particularly for those in leadership to remember that we need to back off from those kinds of statements that create division in our community. So that said, Mark, bonne chance, or is it bonne chance? I know you'll let me know.
Bonne chance. Et merci beaucoup, BZ.
Pas du quoi, mon ami.
Et je peux aussi dire que ça c'est très important pour moi. J'apprécie. Et c'est un peu pour ça que j'ai essayé de faire les choses justement pour le rendre moins partisan.
Merci, Mark. J'aime beaucoup les mots et j'espère d'avoir des autres chances de parler français avec toi mais maintenant anglais s'il vous plaît.
I have no idea what's going on right now.
No, no, no. That's good. That's what I was gonna say.
Thank you, BZ. BZ, thank you.
Mark, Mark knows and I, and I know too. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. I even understood you.
Wow, I'm, yeah, I still am left speechless here. So are there, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? In, in English? So. We have a couple of other French speakers here who, that's awesome. I think it's, so yeah, let's bring it back to the council. Any other discussion?
Perhaps just for further public understanding, this is a process born out of tradition or?
This, well, part, part of, part of the process is, and it's in city code, where the, the changing of the guard essentially happens every two years. And there has to be a two-year gap.
I don't like using the hammer very much.
Welcome.
Thor's hammer. Okay, so we are back from our break at 7:23 PM. And now it's the appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem and discussions of commission and committee appointments. Before I start this process, I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank the city of Sonora, our staff for being so patient with me over the last two years, all the craziness that's happened. It's been a real adventure and I'm happy to pass the gavel and at the same time, I'm saddened at the same time. So, with that, appointment of mayor, mayor pro tem and discussions of committee and committee appointments. Melissa, is there anything you wanted to read or I'll start the process?
If you don't mind starting the process, Mayor, I would appreciate that.
So typically in the past, and I stated this, I think, two years ago, the council started trading positions and keeping things on a turns basis. It's only deviated from that once or twice in the past about 50 years. So I think since about 1968 or 72. So at this time, I would like to nominate the mayor pro tem, Mark Plummer, as our next mayor. I know he'll do a great job. I look forward to working with him and proud to call him my friend. Like the debate we have sometimes and I know the city's in good hands with him. So at that time, I would like to nominate Mark and then I guess if there's any council discussion and then I will ask for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say that I know Mark has been looking forward to this day. I think he's been, what's the word I'm looking for? Educating himself and diving deeply into city matters and protocol. And he'll do a great job and we might, might have to cut him off sometimes.
A full water bottle. If you, if you put it in the freezer, you can just throw it out. But so I guess with that, I will ask for any public comment? Any public comment? I'm going to look at Zoom. Yes, I was going to get the public comment before the second. So, thank you. So I got to say for, for our former mayor and my friend, council member, former council member, Garavenna, has really helped me out along the way and I'm probably going to get text messages from him every so often, you know, telling me what I need to do and I really do appreciate that. So, I don't see any public comment from the audience, but I do see one on Zoom from BZ Smith.
Well, here I go. First of all, I want to welcome our two new council members to this very important job that keeps our city rolling and going. And one thing that I would just like to remind everybody, and particularly you, Mayor Pro Tem, is that this office is neither Republican nor Democrat. In the past, many times, Mark, you have mentioned, that's the Democrats, that's the Democrats. And the truth of it is, we need to remember that the city council is a non-partisan office. And I would like us all to remember that every time we are assembled. And particularly for those in leadership to remember that we need to back off from those kinds of statements that create division in our community. So that said, Mark, bonne chance, or is it bonne chance? I know you'll let me know. Pas du quoi, mon ami. Merci, Mark. J'aime beaucoup les mots et j'espère d'avoir des autres chances de parler français avec toi mais maintenant anglais s'il vous plaît.
I have no idea what's going on right now.
That's what I was going to say.
Thank you, BZ. BZ, thank you.
Mark knows and I, and I know too. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. I even understood you.
Wow, I'm, yeah, I still am left speechless here. So are there, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? In English. So. We have a couple of other French speakers here who, that's awesome. I think it's, so yeah, let's bring it back to the council. Any other discussion?
Perhaps just for further public understanding, this is a process born out of tradition or?
This, well, part, part of, part of the process is, and it's in city code, where the, the changing of the guard essentially happens every two years. And there has to be a two-year gap before, like say, the former mayor or mayor pro tem could be the mayor again. So I, I could not be appointed mayor pro tem. Or I couldn't say, oh, I'll just, I'll just stay up here and everybody agree. It's actually in city code that that can't happen. So every two years we do this. The taking turns part started, I believe it was in the late 60s. Jim, do you remember? Okay, I didn't think so. But I knew, I knew it goes back a long ways. I remember Ronnie Stern telling me about this. I was, I was trying to make a joke, but I'm going to get hurt later. So, but that's what this part is, is tradition. And just passing a torch. And like I said a couple of times, it wasn't observed. And I'm not going to say names, but it wasn't right when it wasn't observed. To me, I think it was very wrong what happened and, you know, I know Mark and I've talked pretty intently on, you know, or with any, well, we've talked a lot about this. So keeping the tradition alive. So, I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem as our next mayor of Sonora. I'm looking for a second. Okay. Yeah. So I made the motion in the second. Andy, you got it just barely quicker than Suzanne. So I'm looking for eyes, any, any eyes? All those in favor?
Probably four, eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Vote for yourself.
You know, I'm really just trying to put you on the spot. Okay. Any, any knows? Any abstentions? Technically abstentions. So, okay, so passes four and one abstention and that is our next mayor. So at this time, I will now pass the gavel.
You can just pass the gavel.
He wants to continue in this seat?
Thank you very much, council. I'm going to be brief, but I still am compelled to say a few words. First, even though it is by tradition and, and seniority, this is an incredible honor and I am, I've been humbled for the last year at the likelihood of it happening. It is a great honor. I do want to tell the very brief story of, I came to Sonora 35 years ago, turned north on Washington Street and by the time I was going somewhere else, by the time I got to Courthouse Park, I was telling myself, shoot, is that cool town? I really hope I can find work here. And I had the good fortune to be working the next morning at 5:00 AM. And this has been home ever since. So a few thanks are in order as well. One to my long-suffering wife, Chantal, who has been mostly patient and is supportive and always has been. And that is always requisite to any type of success in life. I, our late friend Connie Williams recruited me to come onto the city council. It would have never occurred to me. I was on the school board, Sonor L. And, and she thought that I might make a decent council member and have a chance of getting elected. She was right on both counts and we miss her desperately still. So the lady who basically pushed my campaign along was a lady who named Barbara Ligze. She lives just outside the city. But I think I owe at least my first win to her and I want to express that thanks. And then another friend who has been something of an elder in my life or mentor perhaps, Tom Mannix, who is another good man who has been on the Friends of the Library with me for decades. And probably exercised a leveling influence on some of my partisan enthusiasms. Anyhow, I appreciate the trust and the honor and am continuing with my, the first duty of my new office to nominate our mayor pro tem. And I am honored that our, and my friend, Anne Sagerstrom is willing to do that. So if we could, I am nominating Anne and am looking for a second.
I'm trying to say second. I'm not used to this, so.
So, do, we don't, we don't need public comment on this, do we?
There's, there still needs to be.
Okay. So calling for public comment, please. Seeing none either on Zoom nor in the chambers?
Here I am again, Mark. Sorry.
The whole hand thing.
I hadn't got my hand up there quick enough. So I can't think of anybody, if this were a 10 council member, I would still be so grateful that you were nominating Anne for, to be the pro tem because I've known Anne for a long time. Probably met her first in my early 30s and, and I'm way over that now. And she knows the city in and out. She's part of such a, a long part of our local history and with her family, of course. And, and she's also incredibly level-headed with rich common sense and, and is an amazingly good neighbor. I've been with her in her neighborhood from time to time in various capacities. She has such a profound respect for this city and for its beauty and enhancement. And I can't think of anybody who would be better than Anne. And it's appropriate being that she's our other sitting council member that's, that's not brand spanking new. So Anne, thank goodness it's you, honey. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate those, those lovely words and I do try and be a good neighbor, but I also appreciate Mark's, what, what do I appreciate, Mark? No. Your, your confidence in my ability to be your sidekick and support and, and we can guarantee that it will be a non-partisan council. This will be pushing from both sides. So we've got to be in the middle.
Indeed. So seeing no further public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm really, you'd think on the right field that I'd be, have perfect vision, but.
I wasn't there last time.
Oh, okay.
So I just want to say that, that I'm really grateful that you appointed Anne because I think she always comes prepared. She has really, she's quite smart. She's a dear friend and she's the funniest person I think perhaps I've ever known. So yay, Sonora City Council and Anne.
Thank you. Now I'd like to bring it back to a vote. All in favor of Anne as, well, councilwoman Sagerstrom, I'm going to have to get used to proper titles now too as well, for our mayor pro tem. Aye. Aye. So, yes. Any nays? None and one abstention. So, thank you very much, Anne, for taking that position and responsibility.
I'm not sure you'll all be clapping when I run a meeting, but we'll.
Water bottles, Anne. Got them.
Okay. We have a few items left to go through and that would be communications from our staff. I'm sorry. Oh, we need to talk about our.
Our commissions and committees. If you would like to introduce that item or if you would like staff to introduce that, we would be happy to.
Why doesn't staff introduce it? Then I'll comment on it. You will do it more gracefully, I would imagine.
Thank you, Mayor Plummer. So Tracy and I would like to introduce to the new members of the council, the city of Sonora governmental committees. I believe there are approximately 26 committees. We've identified the committee name, the tasks or the scope of work as well as the meeting dates and times. Typically how this process works is we would like you to identify your name and rank the top 10 committees that you have interested in. If all of the committee members could do so, because I believe it's mayor's prerogative to reassign existing members to committees as well. So once you have that information, please turn it into our newly appointed city clerk, Tracy here. And she and I will then sit down with the mayor and review this list for his recommendations. We would like this information back to us no later than the 12th, if that's possible. That will provide us a week. If you have any questions about the committees, about their work, about where they are, please feel free to give me a call and we would be happy to get any information that you need in terms of making this decision. And then we will work with the mayor to do our best to have it agendized for the next meeting in July. Our hope is that none of the committees go vacant in terms of not having an alternate, alternate or a council member. So that is it for me. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. And if the mayor has any follow-up direction, please provide.
So just, just for the record, for people already on committees, I will, and you want to stay on them, I think that a certain continuity really helps, at least for Lafco and some of the others that I've been involved with. So, I will try and respect that as much as possible and then appoint people where I believe they will best serve the city. So, thank you very much for promptness. And that about covers it then. And it's about time for public comment since I'm.
So one thing that I, that's going to happen before you appoint people to committees is the transportation council meeting. Both Colette and I are worthy representatives there. And you're the alternate. I would highly suggest that you decide for someone to be there at the next meeting just to even out this, the dynamic.
Right.
So, and then go on deciding what, what you want to do with appointments for the two people. But I'm not, don't even know what's even going to be on the agenda for that, but it should be, you know, fully staffed.
Yes.
By the county representative or city representatives.
Appreciate that reminder because right now going forward, I think TCTC is going to be very important to us. And what time does it meet normally?
It's on Wednesday at three, second, second Wednesday, second Wednesday at three. So I don't know who's, who wants.
I volunteer. I went to the last meeting.
Yeah, Andy, Andy did go to the, go to one of the meetings.
But if you would then, I would, I appreciate that. Okay.
At least, you know, do it temporarily so you don't have, so you have representation.
Thank you very much. So that's where the public often informs us things that we either are unaware of or overlook. So. And, and there's room for two council members on that. So, yep. So if I can make it, then I could always go. So, okay, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing this list of desired appointments and then we'll see what we can do. Moving on now, we can go to monthly reports. And I would like to start with the ladies. Amy New, chief fire chief. Have you any more this evening? Thank you. Rochelle Kellogg, I know, has important communications.
So we are having a lot of vandalism in our restroom down at Woods Creek Park and Grisby Park. And we continue to have that issue. To the point where we're having to bring in outside services to get stuff out of the lines. All kinds of stuff's getting put down the line. So we had a staff meeting, talked about what are, what might help. And there's no real good answer. But we are, one of the things we all agreed on is we're going to close the bathrooms earlier at night. So we're going to start closing them at seven o'clock. They've been open till 10. We're hoping that if we get them closed before dark, we'll have less issues. So this sign's going up tomorrow. It's kind of got a little human humor to it, but maybe people pay attention to it. But we wanted to let them know why we're doing it and what time we're closing it. So it does state on here, due to ongoing vandalism, the restrooms will be closed at 7:00 PM. And there are all, all public restrooms, including the Stewart Street bathroom, will be opened at seven, are closed at seven. And then Public Works will open them in the morning. I did talk to Katie Dunn and Mike and I talked and he has no problem with giving her a key when they have their concert. So he'll work that out with her so that she can open up for the concert and then she'll be responsible for locking it back up. So, so we'll work with her on that. So anyway, want to let you know these signs are going to go up tomorrow and that will be going on. The other thing I want to let you know is unfortunately, we keep saying it and unfortunately, things do get to this point. Due to, we're really short-staffed up here. I mean, a lot of times there's just one of us if one of us is missing. So we are not going to be able to have magic of the night tonight, or tonight in August. We, we just don't have the staff time to commit to it. We have so many deadlines that we're pushing up against state reports and projects and things, deadlines that we're trying to meet. There's just no way for us to pull together magic this year. Hopefully next year we can regroup and see how we can make it happen. But this year with such limited staffing and so much responsibility, we just don't have time to commit. So I want to let you know that we are canceling it for this year. And Kim will start on the Christmas parade a little later and get the encroachment permit from Caltrans. But we just don't have the staff to do this right now. So unfortunate, but seems I'm the one that invented it. I'm the first one, I'm the one that came up with it. So it's kind of hard, but there's just no way. So.
And is that, is that something that, I'm sorry, if there were public volunteers, is that something that because it's a city-run event, it has to be done by city staff?
I think the city needs to look at how they want to do these in the future. With such limited staffing, that's really, really hard. I mean, when I was hired at the city, I did the Opera Hall, I did the special events, and then eventually I started writing grants and stuff for the city. But that was my function. And now we're down to, yeah, there's just, there's just not enough of us to go around any longer to pull these off. So in the future, but as the clock gets closer and closer, I just knew it wasn't going to be a reality this year. Because it's the first Friday in August, so it's just not going to happen.
I, I just wanted to ask what time the bathrooms open in the morning?
The Public Works opens them, I think they open them around seven in the morning. They go, after they do their check-in, then they go and open the bathrooms up. So.
I'm sorry that it has to happen, but I can see the rationale behind it. So.
Yeah, I mean, we have to the point where we have people getting on, somebody's getting on the roof and putting stuff down the vent pipes. So it's, it's getting a little over the top down there.
Do you have any idea who's responsible for doing this? Or like, is there like, does it seem like a offender or?
So, no, I mean, we don't know who's actually doing it. You know, you don't go into the bathroom with people, right? So that would be really difficult. And so Public Works is working, you know, try and encourage the people down at the park, you know, to, to monitor it. The public would like to use the bathrooms, they're public bathrooms. And if people would just take care of them, they're, they're for the public. But unfortunately, there's some bad actors out there that think it's their place to destroy things instead of keep it nice. So it's available for everybody, including them. So that's where we're at right now. So we're hoping that this will help because it'll still be daylight. And then probably what we'll look at in the wintertime is closing a meeting earlier. But for right now, we're looking at seven. So, and police department closes them at night. They go through, they make sure nobody's in there and then they lock them.
Have we considered cameras? Or is it something that, that's not in our budgets to, to put?
Teru, do you want to talk? We, we threw out a bunch of stuff and Teru has some, a lot of logic.
Okay, all right.
I think we all agree that we can't put.
I think we all agree that we can't put cameras inside the bathroom. And then, right, even if we had them outside, we would have to check the condition of the restroom after each person to know when that vandalism actually occurred. So we could have a camera rolling for twenty-four hours and we come back and find some vandalism. There could be forty or fifty people that have, that we see on camera going in and out, and we would have no way of knowing which, which are the responsible.
Do we know what started this? Like, was there something that happened that all of a sudden, you know, this wasn't a problem before, why now?
It, it's, it's been occurring, but at, not quite the frequency it's occurring. And now it's to the point, and I think Rochelle could speak to it better, but it seems like it's, it's, it's a, if it's not a daily occurrence, it's a couple of times a week where city crews are having to either paint or scrub down or repair something. You know, crime's on the rise across the board and there's, there's a lot of factors involved in that. So I can't really pinpoint one thing, but it has been progressively getting more, more frequent.
Thanks, G.
So, okay, thank you very much. City council has asked us to formalize the appointment to TCTC. So I am going to nominate as interim members to TCTC, Andy Merrill and myself, if that meets with council approval. Is that, is that your?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And I'll call for public comment. Don't see any online or in the public, so bring it back for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? See none? Passes unanimously. So. Chief Ander Wheel, I hate to have you walk back there and then bring you up, but if you have any further reports or messages?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gorski? Nothing tonight. Cool. And Andrew, you didn't introduce me with your last name. So just City Council, Andrew. Any, okay, thank you.
Just like to thank Andrew for his help and support on our homeless ordinances as well as our city department head team. Their contributions were incredibly valuable in shaping this program that is being created. And then I would like to just welcome council members Cruz and Merrill to the team and we are happy to be working with you. Congratulations, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Tracy, did you have any communications this evening?
I would just like to thank you for selecting me as the city clerk and I'll try to do my best. And congratulations to all the appointments tonight.
Thank you.
And I almost forgot, welcome Tracy.
Yes, welcome Tracy. Councilwoman Cruz, any comments you want to make or? Since you have no reports yet from?
I don't know. Here we go.
Yeah.
If you see the little green light, you are on.
Wow. I would just like to say to everyone that came out and voted, thank you. I think we had a below fifty percent turnout rate. It's so important in our constitutional republic that we be active members of the government that we want to have. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Merrill?
I just wanted to say really thank you to the incredible team of, of people that were, you know, on my committee, whether it was canvassing, helping with budgetary issues. I, I couldn't have been elected if it wasn't for that group of people and they know who they are for the sake of saving time. And also for the people that, just our, our community that, that put their trust in me to elect me to city council. It, it means the world. I'm incredibly humbled and especially to hear the stories of outgoing members, such as Garaventa. I almost, i- i- it's kind of humbling to, to think that I, I almost identify as like a hybrid of the two. You know, having gone away, you know, to, to college and decided to move back and, and make a life for myself here. I, I draw a lot of direct parallels with that to Garaventa, so I hope I can just even come, come slightly close to the, the beautiful legacy that they both left behind.
Thank you. Councilman Hawkins?
I just, again, want to thank the city residents here. Congratulations to the two new council members and congratulations. And Mark, congratulations to you. I look forward to the next two years and seeing what everything has in store. Now I can start giving more of my opinions out freely, so that'll be fun.
Yay.
Well, you know, the biggest thing, and I, I hope I tried to set the example. I know Ron Stern's really set the example for me and even, even Bill Canning was pretty good about it. And it's just the fact that, you know, when you're in, in the mayor's spot, sometimes you gotta bite your tongue because you may vote against something, but you still have to go out and represent it. And that couple of times I bit my tongue really hard, so. But it is what it is. And we've got a great little city. We're gonna have some challenges coming up. Newspaper guy's not in here anymore, but we have some challenges coming up. And we're gonna need our heads come together collectively and figure out what we're gonna do. And I don't think anybody's really gonna enjoy it, but it is what it is. You know, we're a little itty-bitty town in a little itty-bitty county in the great big state of California, so we get looked over for everything. So, we have to fight for what we can get. So, we've got a lot of challenges on the way. And my wife now is probably, I'm surprised she's not doing cartwheels outside celebrating because, you know.
Well, maybe you won't get any more midnight taps on the door.
Oh, gosh. Sorry about that, True. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Ex officio.
Ex officio, there we go.
Mayor Pro Tem Sagerstrom, you always have the best, most entertaining.
I was gonna report on my committee meetings, I feel, that, that, that sort of paltry at this point. Although they were very important. And the Central Sierra Economic Development District is pursuing a grant, a broadband grant that will be $200,000 a year for three years for the five-year, for the five-county district. And Calaveras County is leading that, leading the charge on writing the grant. And I have some, I have to talk to Melissa about what they need from, from Sonora to, to apply for that grant. I went to a Firewise Neighborhood Meeting and as all of the people who have spoken today about fire danger and the, the very likelihood that our city, you know, could be endangered, whether purposefully or just by neglect, I mean, we all need to really be conscious of, of ourselves, our neighbors, our elderly, everyone, everyone around us. So, and clean up your, clean up your house. So, and then finally, we, Melissa and I were on a, oh gosh, now, what is the, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Call for the, for the Central Sierra Economic Development District. And, and that's always interesting to see, to see that everybody is in the same deep hole. So, and once again, thank you for the honor of, of being mayor to pro tem. I appreciate your confidence and, and I look forward to working with everyone on the council this next two years. And we will have a lot of challenges.
Yes, we will. But I'm certain we will also rise to meet them. So, and thank you for, thank you for taking that position. Glad that you reconsidered because it makes things a lot smoother. And should we, should we have, oh, well, well, should we have any fires, there's a chance that I will be gone occasionally. And having the second most experienced person on the council as the mayor pro tem is a boon. Yes, well, so, seeing the late hour and the fact that we have staff that needs to get home, I am going to forego the hour speech that I had planned out. And, and wish everybody a good night and thank the City of Sonora for allowing me to be here.